Good afternoon, everyone. The July 25th meeting of the Putnam County School Board is now in session. And if Mr., I mean Ms. Holly Pickens, if you would join us and stand for the pledge, Ms. Holly Pickens is going to lead that with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow your heads, please, and we're going to have a moment of silence for Michelle Father, we come to you today and ask that you watch over each and every one here and help the board make decisions that are in the best interest of the children of Putnam County. And we ask that you watch everyone as they leave here today and keep them safe on their way as they go about their business. And we ask this in Christ's name, amen.
Looks like we have a... Ms. Sandy?
We're going to have to vote.
Well, she can't, her microphone won't work.
We're going to have to vote. We're going to have to vote.
Oh.
Let her participate?
Yeah, we're going to have to vote, I think.
Want me to check with her?
Double check.
Carol?
Okay.
As far as Sandy goes, do...
She's, um, she's not going to be able to vote today. I mean, she can't attend and everything, but she says, um, we've gone the way of like, her audio is not working, so we can't hear her, and she's, you know...
So we don't need to vote to allow her to attend?
We're marking her absent.
Okay.
So I think all she's doing is listening in.
Okay.
So since she can't vote, she's not really...
Right.
Then we have a quorum.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all for coming today. We have quite a few in the audience today. We're going to get started with some presentations. I believe there's Crime Stoppers Awards.
No, it's the Education Foundation.
Oh.
Foundation.
It'd help if I had the right agenda. Yes, the Education Foundation of Putnam County.
I think Phil gave her the wrong agenda on purpose.
That's what it was, setting me up.
Okay, are we on? Can you hear, everybody hear me okay? Okay, great. All right. Good afternoon. I would like to start by thanking the Putnam County School Board, Dr. Searcy and his staff and administrators, the parents and students, for a few moments to award these recipients the scholarships. For those of you who do not know me, I am Les Sims, Chairman of the Education Foundation of Putnam County. I'm also the Chairman of the Scholarship Committee. I would like to start by recognizing the present board members who helped make these scholarships available to these students. Carrie Reynolds, Shondell Goddard, Stephanie Reams, Joyce Oliver, Yvette? Forgot your last name, Yvette. Jones, Yvette Jones, thank you for your time and what you're doing for the students of Putnam County. The Education Foundation of Putnam County is in our second year of awarding scholarships to graduating seniors, and we're proud to present to you today $8,000 to these deserving recipients. For those of you that are not familiar with our foundation, please reach out to me after the meeting or visit us on our social media Facebook page or by our website. As I call your name, will the recipients come up and receive your scholarship? And please stay standing while we get a picture at the end. Macy Woods. Macy is the daughter of Travis and Misty Woods, and she attended Palatka High School where she graduated with a 4.3 GPA. While attending Palatka High School, she was involved with the Anchor Club, the Interact Club, and volleyball. She was awarded Top Scholar, Outstanding Senior Scholar, and Athlete of the Month by the Rotary Club, and All County Volleyball. She graduated summa cum laude and plans on attending St. John's River State College to receive her bachelor's degree in early childhood education. Deasia Evans. Deasia is the daughter of Sarah and Gilbert Evans, and she attended QI Robert's Senior Junior High School and graduated with a 4.89 GPA. She plans on attending Duke University and will work toward her bachelor's degree in neuroscience while on a pre-med track. Deasia was the Vice President of QI Robert's Junior Senior High School Student Government, the President of Young Folks, and AMP, and Leader of the Superintendent Advisory Board of Putnam County. She was a member of the Interact Club, National Honor Society, and the Editor of the QI Robert's Yearbook Staff. Her achievements are the Florida Sunshine State Scholarship recipient, NAACP Award recipient, Straight A Award recipient since the sixth grade. She was a member of the Interact Club, National Honor Society, and Editor of the QI Robert's Yearbook Staff. Her achievements are, well, I already did all of that, didn't I? Let's see here. Her goal is to open the Evans Medical Center in Putnam County to help with the medical needs in our community. Allison Eubanks. Allison is the daughter of John and Joel Eubanks, and she attended Palatka High School where she graduated with a 4.2 GPA. While attending Palatka High School, she was involved with the cheerleading team, softball team, HOSA Club, Interact Club, Beta Club, and the National Honor Society. Her achievements were Honor Roll, Student Athlete Award, Top Cat, Putnam County Top Scholar, Department of Education Talented 20 Team Captain. She plans on attending St. John's River State College to pursue an Associate of Arch and Bachelor of Science education degree. Congratulations, Allison. Christopher Johnson. Christopher is the son of Erica Wilson and Sheldon Johnson. Christopher attended QI Robert's Junior Senior High School and graduated with a 4.6 GPA. His achievements were A Honor Roll, AICE Diploma, Bright Futures recipient, and graduated summa cum laude. He plans on attending Daytona State College, where he will be pursuing a nursing career and eventually becoming a travel nurse. Next up is Faith Thomas. Faith is the daughter of Nancy LaJoy and Zach Thomas. Nancy, I'm sorry. Faith attended Crescent City Junior Senior High School and graduated with a 4.4 GPA. While attending high school, she was Vice President and Treasurer of the National Honor Society, Treasurer of the HOSA Club, played varsity girls' flag football, and was a member of the Interact Club. Some of her achievements were Putnam County's Top Scholar, AICE Diploma, and she was a racing points champion, and she graduates summa cum laude. She plans on attending St. John's River State College and earning her degree in early education. Nolan Faircloth. Nolan is the son of Kelly and Jody Faircloth and attended Palatka High School where he graduated with a 3.83 GPA. While attending high school, he was involved in the Florida House of Representatives Messenger Program, the Student Council, and the Editor of the Yearbook. Some of his achievements were District 6A FACA Honorable Mention, All County Football, All Academic Football and Basketball, Co-Offensive Player of the Year in Football, the Coaches Award in Basketball, Rotary Scholar, Athlete of the Month, Honor Guard, Outstanding Senior, and Most School Spirit, and the Homecoming King. Wow. Nolan plans on attending Weber International University and focusing on education, leadership, and public policy. Madam Chair, if you don't mind, could we get a picture of everybody with the board in the background, and you up front?
Certainly.
You all stand on one end and I'll...
There you go. We also had two more recipients that couldn't make it due to vacation. They were Kendall Asbury and JD Beaver, and we will be presenting those next week when they get back.
I want to squish together a little bit. Ask you, we going to put the students in front?
Yes. Especially with the shorter ones. If we can get the shorter ones up front, there we go.
We're fine. I don't care if I'm in the picture. All my granddaughters, okay. Thank you, Ms. Joyce. Bye. Les, good job.
Thank you, sir.
I'll be calling you, too.
All right.
Thanks, Les.
One of those is my granddaughter.
Really?
Macy Woods, yeah.
They can stay for the meeting.
Yeah.
Come on, buddy.
You know, it's like, you're going to go, you have to check, get to the bank.
Well, no, those kids have already graduated.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But, you know, the college is, you know, it's sort of like, you know, August or the first of September.
Yeah. Good for them, they finally get a summer off. I have to say, I have to say that while I haven't been on the board very long, the presentations are by far my favorite part.
Well, do them first.
Yeah, gets us off on a good start.
When you do have a bad board meeting, you might feel a little different. They don't all go great.
Okay, we come now to the public comment section. Okay. There being none, we will move forward to the public hearing on the adoption of amendments to policies.
Madam Chairman, do we have to do these all individually, or can we do them collectively?
We can do them collectively, I think.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve for adoption of amendments to Policies 1430.03, 32.10. I think it said point one zero.
No, it's no point.
No, it's 3210, excuse me. Number 3430.03, number 4430.03, number 8320, 8600, 8800, 8810, 9700.01, per Neola Volume 23, number 2, January 2023 update.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. David Buckles to adopt these amendments to the policies, and a second by Mr. Phil Leary.
Roll call.
And...
Roll call.
Ms. Attorney, is this roll call?
Yeah, I'm thinking a roll call because there's a change in policy. So District 1? Adopt. District 2?
Adopt.
District 3? That's Ms. Phil, you're just absent. District 4?
Adopt.
District 5?
Adopt.
So it appears that the, the motion then passed?
The motion, okay. The motion has then passed four to zero on the adoption of the amendments to policies by Neola. We move forward to our consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be polled?
Each individual.
Start with Holly.
Okay. Ms. Pickens?
Um, G9.
Okay.
I believe it's G9, let me make sure.
I wanted to pull G5 unless, you have any more, Holly?
G9 is it.
G9, why don't we remove it?
Yeah, Madam Chair, we, we talked about we're going to pull that.
Yes.
That's good.
Pull that from the table, that'll mean...
It's not on the current agenda that I'm looking at. G9, there's no G9.
The, yeah, Student Code of Conduct.
Well, it may be, I'll be looking at consent agenda.
Okay, then maybe it got pulled, that's a new one.
I'm looking at a new one. Updated, Ms. Susan's been busy, but I wanted to pull G5, the Guardian Agreement, briefly.
I have nothing to pull.
Okay, so we have removed item G9 from the agenda, and you said that would be tabled, Dr. Searcy?
So I guess just, just a G.
Table for the next meeting.
G5, I guess, would just leave me with the Guardian.
Do, do we have to do that? Because on this current agenda, there is no G9, so do we have to...
You have G9 on?
You sure you have the July 25th agenda?
I think...
Okay, I do see it, yes.
You don't have it down?
You know, it, it is there. I'll bet you, I was looking at E9. I was looking at E9.
Okay.
I pulled, let me see.
E5?
I know it was E.
Did you want to pull the Guardian Agreement, is that...
I did, and I guess I pulled the wrong E or G.
No, it's...
No, it's...
You're right.
Okay, I've got it underlined, never mind. What I wanted to talk about, and I wanted to first commend the superintendent and staff for where we've gone with the Guardian Program, for everything that, that we've done, and let him know that he needs to let us as a board know whatever it is that we can do to improve that. I was real pleased with, you know, the progress out of Kelly Smith to try to get a defensible space out there for the school and some of the things that he's just looking at in the future. So I just wanted to let you know that I, everywhere I go, I hear a lot of people that, you know, they see all the stuff that's happening in the world, and they just, they thank, they thank me for things that the board has done, and I just wanted to let you guys know, just if there's anything, Rick, that we need to do, you need to let us know.
Again, I'll go back about five years ago when, when this board approved that, five years and a month to be exact. But that was a pretty bold decision, and it really did position us to be one of the first districts in the state to do the Guardian Program. And, and I'm very proud of that because the rest of the state is starting to follow suit now.
Yeah.
And because we have shown that it is a very effective way to protect our students.
But just, just don't hesitate, let us know.
And I want to thank the Sheriff's Office, Gator Deloche, and their cooperation. We could not have done it without their cooperation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as is, or do we...
I'll second it.
I think you need to...
I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept.
Okay, minus G5.
Yeah.
And G9. And G9.
And, and I'm, go ahead, you make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda minus G5 and G9.
I'll second that.
While we, while we...
Not minus.
We just wanted to comment on it, right?
I just wanted to comment. I did not, I pulled it to comment. It's still there, but we can make a separate motion if the board attorney thinks we need to do that. Yeah, we good?
Okay, we'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda minus G9.
Okay, we have a motion by Holly Pickens to accept the consent agenda minus G9, and a second by Mr. Buckles. Any more discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Those opposed? Being none, the consent agenda passes four to zero. And then that would take us to emergency, so, okay. I need to do this, right? The board is now moving into the emergency session.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept item L1, 2023-2024 Personnel Allocation Change Number 4, 4.1, Justification Explanation Time Sensitive.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Holly Pickens and a second by Phil Leary to accept item Agenda, Agenda Item L1.
All in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, being none, the motion passes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we approve L2, Juvenile Crime Prevention Office Security Officers for Fiscal Year 2023-2024, Justification Explanation Time Sensitive.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Buckles to accept item L2, and a second by Holly Pickens. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, being none, the motion passes.
Madam Chairman, I'll move item for approval, item L3, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Office Consultant for Fiscal Year 23-24, as a justification explanation, it is a time-sensitive issue.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Phil Leary to accept item L3, and a second by Holly Pickens. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, being none, the motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept item L4, the amendment between the school board of Putnam County and Zelo, justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
I'll second, well, Phil second, that's good.
We have a motion by Holly Pickens to accept item number L4, and a second by Mr. Phil Leary. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, being none, the motion passes.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, we pass emergency item L5, 2023-2024 Mental Health Allocation Plan, Justification Explanation Time Sensitive.
We have a motion by Mr. Buckles to accept... Oh, discussion on the matter?
I just wanted to discuss, yeah, I think this is an outstanding plan, and I applaud the staff for what, you know, putting this together, and I think this, along with the, the extension to 12-month contracts for our school psychologists, is going to be a tremendous help to those students that need it. So, thank you, Dr. Searcy and your staff.
Very good.
All right. All in favor of adopting item number L5, say aye.
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 All opposed, there being none, the motion passes. Do we now move out of emergency? We are now out of emergency session. And is there any discussion on unfinished business or new business?
No, ma'am.
Nope.
Okay. We come to the board members' reports. Ms. Pickens, would you like to begin?
Um, I'll just start by giving my sincere condolences to Mike Tucker and his family. I really didn't know Michelle Tucker very well, but I know that in the short time that she was in Crescent City, those students and her, her fellow faculty members loved her, and that speaks volumes to me. So, so just, Mike, know that we're, we're all praying for you and your family. Secondly, we have an invite to the Take Stock in Children mentoring program orientation, and I just want to encourage everyone to try to attend. It's an absolutely great program. I think there's 17 new mentees, and I'm sure that they could find a mentor up here. So it's well worth your time, it's one reason I'm extremely excited. School's starting because I haven't been able to talk to my, they block you for the whole summer, so I just can't wait to hear what my mentee has done and, and how much she's grown, and it'll, it'll just be a great thing. So I encourage you to get involved that way. I'm ready for school to start. I know that maybe some students might not necessarily be, but I'm ready for school to start, and I'm also ready for building a school to start. And I really want to thank the Education Foundation, it's a wonderful thing, and to be able to recognize these seniors, and I believe all of them are going to accomplish great things. I talked to Faith Thomas as I came in today, and she's actually going to be working at Crescent City Junior Senior High School, and she's in our Peri De Pro program. Although, when I called it Peri De Pro, she said she had heard two or three different names for it, so, but she's, she's very excited about becoming a teacher one day, so that's a, that's a great thing, and...
The new name for that is Grow Your Own.
Grow Your Own. Okay, I'm going to write that down, but she is, she is involved with that program, and I'm very excited about that.
That is a good, good name.
And that's all I have, thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, it's hard to find teachers, and I'll echo what Holly said. This, this new Grow Your Own program is, is without a doubt a wonderful thing. It's obvious when the state of Florida starts extending drop to try to keep teachers from leaving the ranks because they can't find people who want to teach in the environment that we're, we've found ourselves in with, with government being responsible for education and at the same time tearing it down at the same time. It's kind of crazy, but I think most of you know that we get a bad rap with a whipping kid for about everything that goes on, and whether it's going on or not, is, is, you know, is up for us to kind of keep an eye on and for people to let us know when things aren't right. But I, real, real proud of that program, I think it's a wonderful thing. I would like to echo what Holly said about Michelle, and Mike Tucker and family. Very, very wonderful group of people, and Michelle's mom and dad, you know, her dad was our Capital Projects Manager for years in the district. She grew up in the schools, so we're going to really, we ache for them, and at the same time, you know, we're, we're just glad that there's no more suffering going on. On a more positive note, I've had the opportunity to attend a couple of Oversight Committee meetings of the Bond Oversight Commission, and they really ask a lot of very pertinent questions that, you know, we, we have a different thought process when you're up here and you've done this a while, you, you know, we get presented the information, and we have expectation, reasonable expectations that when the superintendent presents it as our secretary, that it's all been vetted properly, and, and we, we have a, an element of, of trust and confidence that everything's fine. And they're looking at issues in different ways than what we would, and I really have enjoyed the past two I've been to. I don't know that I'll attend all of them because right now there's not a lot of construction going on, so they may slow down their schedule somewhat, but when you get a chance, Rick, they are advertised where if more than one board member showed up, it wouldn't be a...
Right, and they are taped.
They advertise them anyway.
I mean, I, I watched it online, so...
Oh, really? Okay.
And they are under the sunshine, so we, we've been advertising those because they're part of the committee of the board.
They asked me a question the other night, and I hesitated, but, you know, to give input, but I realized it, I thought it was advertised, so I said a few words, but they're really, they're really, you know, working hard trying to make sure that the things are done in a proper manner, and I think it's a really good, good process. And my last would be the foundation. When the foundation was organized some years ago, we caught a lot of grief on some of the things the board at the time did in trying to organize the foundation, but look at what they've done, and the kids that come up and the scholarships and, you know, and they're trying. Hopefully, that foundation can grow and grow to the point that they can fund other aspects of education in Putnam County, and that's the, the goal ultimately, so I just have to thank them so much. But other than that, I, I had, came in, met with the superintendent on a variety of items today, and he's working on them, and I feel, feel real good about where we're headed, and pray we have a great start of school. And that's, that's my report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First, I'd like to echo David and Holly's comments on, on the Tucker family. Michelle's parents were dear friends of mine, actually worked with her mom years ago, and the, the service was just unbelievably wonderful. And Dr. Searcy, thank you for your, your comments, you did an excellent job. You could be a preacher maybe one day. But anyway, we'll keep them in our prayers. I see Mike on a weekly basis almost because I go out and eat lunch with my granddaughters as David does at Kelly Smith, so. I'd like to, maybe at the next regular meeting, I think the next meeting is a budget meeting, isn't it?
August 1st.
Yeah.
And then August 4th.
So at our next...
And August 8th is our regular meeting.
Okay, at the 8th, if we could get an update on where the architectural services are, construction kind of starting dates, and, and then where our real estate portfolio is with, with moving forward with that, because I get, that, that's what I get questioned about most, when are things getting started, where are we, and so it'd be helpful, you know, to, to have that information updated.
Mr. Bowen's on it, he's already got it.
Okay, all right.
He's got the process, working on it now.
The, want to give a great thank you to Rhonda for the budget presentation yesterday. It was outstanding, and...
Absolutely.
I have said in a lot of budget presentations, a lot of different agencies and entities over my career, and it really was phenomenal. I mean, especially for a new board member, it answered a lot of questions for me and gave me some real clarity, and one issue that, that maybe the superintendent and I can work with, with our lobbyist on, trying to help us with a future down the road with our Avalorum reduction when our, when our... with our avaloreum reduction when our, when our, you know, when our revenues go up. And then the last thing I want to mention is I did ask Carolyn and Charlie to look into whether or not the board, if, if in fact they wanted to, after doing a feasibility study, could require impact fees for new construction without the county being a part of that. And so, you know, Tim Parker, the property praiser tells me they can and, and I've read the statute and it's not very, it's somewhat ambiguous. And I'm not saying that I'm advocating for them now, but, but I think we, we missed the boat in, in some, some big projects, including the nine hundred million dollar Seminole Electric Plant and the GP expansion, I think was almost four hundred million. But we, we've got to start thinking outside the box as far as, you know, how we're going to deal with, with our revenue generation and the demands and impacts that we're going to have. And I think Rhonda did a good job pointing this out. She, you know, and the requirement that we keep almost, you know, what, three million dollars in reserves. So, I do, I am interested in having that discussion, maybe in a workshop with, you know, the board and, and, you know, whoever we could get to, to come in and, and work with Carolyn and, and Charlie and, and kind of just understand it more. I think it's important that, you know, we understand that, but Charlie doesn't usually agree with me, but he did yesterday when I told him, he says, "We really have to think outside the box" and he said, "You know, you're right." So, anyway, that's all from me, thank you.
All righty.
Before he passes on with that, you, you made some really good points. And I, I went back last night and pulled some stuff from years ago when the county commission had impact fees and the school board derived the money from the county's impact fee. In fact, the county, and it became so volatile to the county commission that they were, some of them were voted out and it became a political issue. And, and then the county wanted us to give the portion that we had collected and already had budgeted back to the county. And we, I, in looking at the old newspaper articles, it, it, you know, we didn't do that. The majority of the board at the time didn't feel like that was the right thing to do because they had the money budgeted. But it, you're right, it, it needs to be studied carefully before we have a, a lot of going on there because that was a, that was a bad time, I remember that. But I, I didn't know if the schools could do it.
I think they can do it independently, but.
Well, I've, I've done some research on it, it sounds like it, the schools have an impact on it in that you are the ones who do the study of like how much is needed and what's the appropriate amounts and then you go to the county or whatever governmental entity to actually pass an ordinance to impose that on, on the people because it, it sounds like the school districts themselves don't have that authority. I found some.
There was, there was a lot more to that than, than met the eye back and, and I'm, my memory went back, Phil. And, or I, you, you were helping us in Tallahassee do stuff at the time, but it was a.
Under the Growth Management Act, it's called concurrency, you know, there is a provision for, for schools for impact fees and, you know, looking at capital outlay. But capital outlay isn't just new schools, I mean, it's, you know, we've got aging buildings and, you know.
Oh, yeah.
A backlog of things that, that need to be done that they could be applied for. And, you know, with us transferring the entire maintenance department and everything under the general fund and looking at, you know, how we could generate some money because, I mean, there's no guarantee we're going to get that next funding from the state for Inlarren High School. And I, you know, I think we'll have a great shot at it. But in the meantime, we got, we need to, we need to look at some other alternative revenue sources and, and see what, what the potential impact would be. And, you know, it's, and most of it is, is not to homeowners where new, new home construction is usually around four or five hundred dollars. But, you know, it's based on the, a whole host of things. But we also may want to look at doing a, the feasibility study at some point in time. If the board decides they want to do that, I mean, that, you know, I mean, I'd like to, but, you know, there's four other y'all that need to make that decision.
Well, I think, you know, I, I agree, it's something we need to look at.
Yeah, when I, in my research, I'd come across Clay County as well as Santa Rosa County in the Panhandle where basically in both instances, the, the school board went, you know, did the, Clay County especially, the school, the school board did an impact fee study, submitted it to the Board of County Commissioners and gave recommendations about what the impact fee should be. And then the Clay County Board of County Commissioners implemented coordinates where they, you know, revised it to, you know, reflect the updated amounts in the feasibility study that the school district had done. So, the, the district does have an influence on it, but it didn't sound like they can literally go out and say, okay, this is what everyone has to do. You know, it has to be adopted by the, at the county level or at the city level if you want to do it that way. But it's, I think, easier at the county level since uniformly spread across the entire county and not just select municipalities or towns.
Got you.
Good information, thank you.
So, we can, at some point in time, whenever the board chooses, we could, we could workshop it and have a conversation.
Probably get through the budget process and, you know, get, get schools started and then, and then sometime in the fall, maybe.
Yep.
And earlier today, we actually had a meeting with the government administrators in the county and the cities and towns because we're in the process of revising the interlocal agreement between, that's related to school concurrency and making sure that there's funds available if, if there's expansion in building that's occurring in the county or wherever. And so, we're revising that agreement and part of that process is, you know, impact fees. And so, hopefully that, the fact that we're getting together on this, because I don't know if you're aware, but no one's really done anything that's been in the interlocal agreement for the past fifteen years since it was passed back in two thousand eight. You know, it just, it just wasn't happening. Apparently that is the case in a lot of school districts like ours where there's not a lot of development happening and the school population or students is not increasing. So, you know, there's not a lot of need to be looking into where should new schools be going and built and, you know, that sort of thing. But, but it's something that we should be doing and so, we're going to be looking more into that going forward and getting that revised because the way it is right now, the agreement's very cumbersome and it's not realistic for a little county like ours. You know, if it were a dead county, it'd be one thing, you know, meeting quarterly to do this and some, and they do that. But, you know, none of that's in the statute and we're, as requirements that have to be done exactly like that. So, we're trying to make it be something that we can all live with and that be realistic for our county.
Awesome. And I wanted to jump back to actually, and, and if you, do you have, do you want to go ahead and do any other report that you have?
Oh, I don't, I don't know, I don't think I have anything else, so, go right ahead.
Um, I did want to ask one question on the Oversight Committee, I know they'd been meeting recently. My, my question is, aren't, are they going to at some point give a report to the board?
They've talked about that, I believe they're going to wait probably later in the fall until.
Originally they have one on Susan, was it the next weekend or today?
I wanted it today, but then they took it off.
According to the bylaws, they have to report in writing at least once annually and that will be to the board, so at some point they will.
I'm, I'm sure they're just kind of getting their feet under them at the moment, but I'd be very interested to, to see their perspective on things. Like you said, there's.
Real please.
They're asking, I think you got a very diverse group and I, I hope their, their viewpoints and perspectives can be maybe widely different from ours and it just is going to make everything better all the way around.
I think you'd be very proud of what they're, the job they're doing daily, no stone unturned.
And just for my own report, number one, I want to congratulate the recipients that were here today. It just always warms my heart to see such successful young people and I know the work that goes into, well, I don't know the work that goes into a four point six GPA because I've never seen that myself.
Phil had one higher than that one.
But it's, it's just always wonderful to see those and, and to see them recognized and to know that that's what's going to go out in the world and represent our area. So, I was, just want to say congrats to them. I also, I recently gave a small speech locally here to a group and was peppered with quite a few questions as far as, you know, what's going on with the school board and where are we on this and where are we on that? And I just, it, it made me realize that sometimes individually, that I, I personally want to be reaching out to my community and providing some of that information and I was able to do so quite a bit during this, this meeting. But I also wanted to encourage parents that may be watching this or teachers, you know, the board is here. My, my personal feeling is, you know, I want people to be able to reach out to me if you've got concerns or questions or something. I, I definitely don't know all the answers by a long shot, but I'm more than willing to help someone, help guide them to the right person, be that Dr. Surrance or someone here in the district. And I just feel it's important, if you want to, if you want answers, look on our website, call one of your school board members before misinformation goes around because I think a lot of times just communication can avoid mis, misunderstandings or, or, you know, just false information that gets passed around in schools. But I did really appreciate the opportunity to speak the other night, it gave me all kinds of ideas to start looking into and it'll be, I'll be setting some meetings on some of those issues at a later date here. But, but it was just an excellent time to meet with the public and, and I very much enjoyed it. And other than that, Dr. Surrance?
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of things, I think it's been, Rhonda helped me remember, since our last meeting on June twentieth, didn't we have our bond sale after that? So, we have, we sold, and correct me if I'm wrong, tell me the number because I'll get it wrong.
The number we talked to Dave, it was nine ninety-nine hundred and ninety-five thousand to keep from hitting that hundred million dollar mark. If you hit that, it's a lot more expensive, but we sold at a premium, so we sold at a hundred and six million and some change. I don't have it because that number's in front of me. And after the issuance cost and the insurance cost and everything, we booked in our, we received by wire a hundred and four million and some change. So, and actually the payback on that is going to be nine ninety-nine hundred and ninety-five thousand plus interest on it over the time. But I was very pleased that we did sell on the premium and so, that's more money that we've got on the books to help with the schools and everything that we're doing.
And if you are, have your accounts, investment accounts with Wells Fargo, they got the whole deal, so.
Right.
We had eleven people that were watching the sale, eleven companies and seven of them made bids on it, Wells Fargo ended up. You can piece it out, they could have only bought a billion dollars worth of something, but they lost the entire issuance and it came in at four point one four percent interest and when we had been going around doing our presentations, we were estimating four point four four. So, we sold it at a lower interest rate than we had been estimating, so all in all, it was a good deal.
Yeah. So, the money's in the bank. Now, the hard part is figuring out how to spend it, but anyway, that's the, this, the, the funds we'll use to build the two elementary schools. And of course, I mentioned at the last meeting that the governor signed our special facilities and our appropriation request for Crescent City. So, a lot of good things happening now in Putnam County School District. I also want to mention, I think, David, you mentioned about maybe our retention data, but we, Tanya just sent the up to the date retention data for all the different employee groups across the district over the last three years. And we pretty much have increased by four or five percentage points across, and, and most of them are in the ninety percents. So, you know, the novice teacher mentors program that we're doing now, the, the new teacher institute, which is going on currently, is really meant to really foster that support for those new teachers and it's really paying off. And actually, I'll be going there tomorrow and speaking to that group. We have about forty-five new teachers that are participating in that. And we'll actually invite their principals and their, or assistant principals to come tomorrow, I believe, or the next day, I forget, Thursday, kind of the co-many, co-many in the activity and they'll get to meet with them and all of them together. So, the new teacher institute is.
We got invited.
Absolutely.
We should have emailed.
Yep. Look forward to seeing you there and you'll get to meet our new teachers. Just a few ideas as we go into the beginning of school, just remind families to check our website and social media for back to school information. And it has, especially for our, our young students, registration dates at times, you know, go to the school and meet your teacher. A lot of health information regarding immunizations, especially if you have a seventh grader, there's some shots they have to have before, you know, they can move on. Backpack school supply giveaway events are taking place, I believe they're on the website. I went to one of our radio stations today and they're actually collecting a lot of school supplies. And our district teacher of the year, Katrina Viola, who's from Crescent City Junior Senior High, was actually recognized last week at the state teacher of the year gala. So, she was there, teacher from which county actually won? Bay County. But it was good to have her represented there and, and I know Sarah Jean was there to represent the district, so congratulations, Ms. Viola. One of our former district winners, Asia Kellner, who was a teacher at Mosley and now she's a coach, academic coach, was asked to present at one of the sessions held for this year's honorees. And I want to thank you, send a thank you to all the local businesses and organizations who've donated to the new teacher institute, which includes our foundation, they've actually written a check to provide a lot of the gifts and supplies for our new teachers.
Wonderful.
Yep, so a lot of good things happening in Putnam County.
And how many new teachers did you say we have?
We have forty-five that will be attending that, I don't know if we have, and that changes day to day, I mean, it goes up because we're hiring people, but there's forty-five at the new teacher, teacher institute currently.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
There any other comments?
Linda, the only other thing would be kind of piggybacking off of what you said, parents in the community, they, they see stuff on national television and they think it's really happening everywhere right here and, and if, if people have concerns about stuff they think is being done that shouldn't be done, they need to just call us and, and let us, you know, we're not magic, if we don't know what they're thinking, we can't do anything about it, so.
That was part of what I expressed the other night too, that, you know, if you've, if, if you have an issue with this, I don't know that, just by, like you say, by magic. So, you know, reach out and let us know, we can look into it or we can.
Whether it's, whether it's questions about prayer and the superintendent and I have had a conversation about that. I mean, there's constitutionally protected prayer, it can happen all the time, but it's, it's something that people really don't realize. And, and I know he's gone above and beyond to try to continue to do what protect the rights. Now, sometimes you get at a graduation and a speech might get approved and it turns out to be a little different, of a different, you know, than what the principal was exposed to, but that's the exception and those are usually handled. But all they got to do is let us know because we don't know, but thank you for bringing that up when you brought it up.
And if they have a, you know, once school starts, if they have a question or even before school about anything at school, their first contact needs to be that principal.
Right.
Sure.
And then, because if they contact you, that's fine, you're going to contact me and I'm going to contact the principal.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to invite going above everyone else's lines, but yeah, principals need to be advised of what's going on in their schools.
Sure.
But if it's a district question or general questions.
But you're going to get caught all the time in public like that.
And I'm not saying people should not reach out to y'all, but I'm saying specific incidents or concerns about a school, start with the principal first and they, you know, we can follow up after that.
I always tell them to call David Buck.
That's fine, because then I, I tell them to call the superintendent. But no, I mean, we really want to know, I mean, if you've got a problem and you've got a concern, let us know, it's just the way it is.
I normally send them to Randy Hestrom.
Randy, Randy will take care of it, yeah.
Yeah, if it's those, you know, those kind of issues, so.
All right, anything further? All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you, appreciate it.